Okay.
Go ahead.
Announcement is made, the adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, et cetera, of the New Jersey Public Open Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeDich.
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero. Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Ms. Jan. Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Here.
We also have with us tonight our board planner, Ms. Favate, our board engineer.
Here.
Mr. Holloway, and our substitute board attorney, Mr. Friend.
President.
All right. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item of business before us tonight is a resolution. Resolution is on application number 20:529, Parsippany Littleton LLC. Did all of the members of the board have an opportunity to review the resolution? And were there any comments? All right, seeing none, I will open it up for a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman, Dinsmore.
All right. Dinsmore moves to accept the resolution as written. Do we have a second?
Second, Mendel.
All right. We have a second opportunity for debate. Any comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Nora?
Mr. DeDich.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
All right, moving on to our first agenda item, District at 1515 Urban Renewal LLC. This is for the carried motion from June 21st. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Nicole Madsiak of the law firm Dave Pitney.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nicole Madsiak of the law firm Dave Pitney, for the record, M-A-G-D-Z-I-A-K, located here in Parsippany. We are seeking to have the application carried without further notice to an in-person meeting on July 26th.
So noted. Everything's good with that, right Nora?
Yes.
Okay. Then let's go ahead and continue with that. Your motion is, or your request is granted.
Great, thank you. And can I please just confirm that it will be at 7:30?
7:30 is our starting time.
And in this room, correct?
In this?
Yes.
Nora?
Perfect. Yes.
This is not a Zoom meeting.
It's not going to be Zoom meeting.
Can I get the chair an in-person meeting? You'll be on the dock. The meeting will begin at 7:30. Is there anything else on the agenda for that night, Nora?
There is something else after. I believe 1515 needed just a short period of time to finish up, but I do have them on first.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, and no further notices is necessary, as you said.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. All right. Next, we have the ordinance question for master plan consistency. That's a review of ordinance 2021:14. Susan?
Okay, so I think most of you all know that cannabis, also known as marijuana, was determined or designated to be legal by the state of New Jersey back in February. And so all the municipalities then had to promulgate rules and regulations. Every municipality was given six months, which is August 22nd, to take action. It was sort of an interesting way of doing things on the part of the state. They basically required municipalities to take action, and if no action was taken to regulate cannabis, it would essentially be allowed, you know, in any industrial zones or retail zones for the retail sale. And even worse, if you took no action and had that imposed on you, then you could not, as a municipality, take further action for another five years. So it was sort of, you know, incumbent on municipalities to decide how they wanted to regulate it, or if they wanted to allow it at all. So there was a working group made up of a couple council members, the mayor, myself, the township attorney, to try to figure out, you know, how the township is going to regulate this. And the outcome is the ordinance that you have before you for master plan consistency review. And it essentially has two aspects. It creates a new chapter within the township code for the creation of a new licensing requirement, the operation of these businesses, the process, the application process, the taxation, all of those sort of logistical aspects. And then separately, it amends the zoning ordinance to allow as conditional uses up to two classes of the wholesale and the distribution, up to two licenses, I should say, of each of those two classes. So a total of four of these such businesses would be allowed in Parsippany. So it's fairly limited. And then, as you see in the ordinance, there are also locational limitations. So in the Chapter 77, there is a requirement about distance between these businesses and school properties, also distance between these businesses and publicly owned properties as well as residential districts. So some pretty extensive buffer requirements. And those are in the Chapter 77, not the zoning ordinance. And the significance of that is it means that they can't seek a variance from those requirements. They'll have the usual appeal process for licenses in the township, but they can't ask for a variance from those particular requirements. Within the zoning aspect, there are additional locational requirements, and one of those restricts the roads that these businesses can locate on, primarily to the major roads of the township. And the concern there was to try to mitigate truck traffic, you know, getting into residential neighborhoods. There's a minimum mod size requirement, there's some other requirements regarding signing and fencing, sign and evict fencing, those are in the zoning chapter. So the way that these businesses would be approved, there's actually three different approvals that they will need. They'll need a state license, and that is still being developed at the state level. There's going to be a board that deals with this licensing requirement at the state level. They'll need this local license, but they can't get the local license until they've got the zoning approval, which will either be at this board, assuming that they come in and they don't need any variances, or it'll be at the Board of Adjustment. So they will not be able to get the local license without that zoning approval first. So that is kind of a thousand-foot picture of the ordinance. I'm happy to answer questions. There is a map. I'm going to hold it up. I can get down there. Yes. So this map, I think, there's several of them in Town Hall. They've been living here, if folks are interested. I'm going to first turn it to the planning boards so that they can see. And I know you can't see every detail, or even many of the details, but what this shows is that these would be allowed as conditional uses anywhere you see in lavender, which is most of the SED zones, except for one near the MacCallie campus, that's SED 10, but all the other SED zones would be allowed, as well as the light industrial zones. But then because of the buffer requirements and the road requirements, really, these would be allowed in four, primarily four areas. Up around Booton, off of Fanny Road, there's the Edwards Road, New Road corridors, and then there's around Jefferson Road, Pomeroy Road, that part of town, really the central part, right off the highways, and then portions of the Morris Corporate Center. Not all of the Morris Corporate Center, there are buffers there. And you could see on this map, I'm going to angle it, it does show the buffers from the schools, from the residential zones, and from the township-owned property. This map is also on the website. The township has, if anybody in the audience is interested, the township has a whole cannabis section on its website that has this ordinance, it has the map, it has some of the background as well. So that is it for the ordinance itself. Actually, it would be easier on Zoom. What you have before you tonight to do is master plan consistency. So I think you've, at this point, the board, I think, is familiar with the process. Really, it's just looking at whether the proposed ordinance is consistent with the goals, the intent of the master plan. And I will say that the master plan does not actually mention the word cannabis. So in terms of, you know, a specific recommendation of the master plan, it's not there. However, there are some goals that I think are relevant. The first goal, which is actually really priority one of the master plan, is protection of the residential neighborhoods, in terms of the character, the density, the established land uses. And so I think this is consistent with that goal in the sense that it has these buffer requirements from residential districts. So nothing within 500 feet of a residential zone. So it's really going to protect against any intrusion of these cannabis businesses, including the truck traffic or other impacts resulting from them. And the second relevant goal, I think, is very similar. It really speaks to establishing buffer zones and transition areas to, again, separate those incompatible uses, allow for some graduation of intensity of use. And along the same lines, it's because of these buffer requirements, we believe it's consistent with that goal as well. Another goal that I think is quite relevant is really, I think, underlying, this is the final goal, underlying most of the intent of adoption of this ordinance is protection and support for the retail and commercial environment in the township. And I think, you know, one of the driving factors of allowing some level of cannabis business is allowing flexibility of uses in the office parks particularly, you know, allowing a type of use that is pretty compatible in terms of what you see from the outside. It's very similar to any other warehouse type of use or distribution facility. So it's really intended to support that commercial and office environment. So that is all I had in terms of consistency with master plan goals. And I'll be happy to answer questions, but I think the action before you tonight is just to essentially determine that it's consistent with the master plan and send it back to the council.
Okay.
Where it's on, I believe, for a second reading Tuesday night.
All right.
I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Couple of residents came to a council meeting. Now, we've limited this to Class 3 and Class 4. What that means is that there'll be no growing, there'll be no processing, and there'll be no local dispensaries, those are the other classes of service for cannabis. All this is allowing under Class 3 and Class 4, the wholesale license that can transport from wherever it is processed to a warehouse or distributor. And then that distributor can distribute to dispensaries anyplace other than in Parsippany. We won't have no local dispensaries in Parsippany. That's number one I want to make clear. The residents that complained was that, and Susan, I mentioned this to you because no place in here do we specifically say Class 1, Class 2, Class 5, and Class 6 are not allowed.
Yeah.
We don't say that.
I believe that change is going to be made for the second reading. Thank you, Councilman, for reminding me of that. It's implied in the sense of
It's implied.
Anything that's not allowed is prohibited, but just to be clear.
To be clear, we're going to state that it's prohibited. That's number one. Number two is when we picked the zoning locations for this, we were looking for zoned areas that would have the most direct access to our highways and not through local roads. So we were looking to push them onto the highways, since they're not going to distribute here locally anyway, push them to the highways and not on our local residential streets. Thank you.
Okay. So our task tonight is with regard to the consistency with the master plan. This is in the forum for making your own personal decisions about this matter that are outside of whether or not this is consistent with the master plan. So I just want to make that clear. And a vote for or against this does not necessarily indicate your preference or position on marijuana. So with that, I'll open it up to any board members who have questions for Ms. Favate, or anybody else who's qualified to answer those questions.
Actually, I would ask, Mr. DiPiero actually answered most of my questions on this, but the way that things have been going in this world, sometimes if you leave a door open and for one item, other items end up finding their way into the tent. And I'm just trying to make sure that we have very carefully, it sounds like you have very carefully and thoroughly vetted this process, but I want to make sure. The wholesale warehousing and pickup, drop-off, and delivery to wholesalers or to distributors outside of the town, I don't object to. That, you know, the product is now legal, there's nothing I have to say about that. That's beyond my purview. But I want to make sure that indeed, every effort is taken to make this just purely a wholesale transactional process.
Right. I think that's the case. You know, at the end of the day, it is a product that's being, you know, moved via truck. There are a couple of unique things in the sense that currently that these are cash-only businesses because they're still prohibited at the federal level. So we have included, and I believe it's Chapter 77, has some provisions for security, allows some flexibility on fencing so they can have a little bit more security, you know, making sure that we're having adequate lighting, no nuisance impacts, including smell, really limiting the possibility of interaction by any members of the public. So, and I think, I think that there's a lot in there, if you reviewed it.
Just because it is the cash aspect of the business bothers me more than anything else right now. I am aghast that this country would be so hypocritical as to allow a product to be sold without making it legal nationally.
Right.
Why do not the national laws apply? I do not understand that. I really don't.
Yeah, if I may comment on that, I share your concern. On the council, there were some of us that wanted to ban everything from Parsippany. This was a compromise. We do have vacant offices and warehouses in the township that could bring in some tax revenue from that perspective. And that was a push by others, not by me. I wanted to ban everything personally. So this was a compromise, and we did do everything, the concerns you expressed, we all had, and I have. And that's why we're going to specifically change this to say that the other classes are void and are not allowed in Parsippany. They can't get here under a variance or anything else.
Right.
Again, right now, given what you have created, which sounds actually, in my opinion, about the best of all possible outcomes for the way the world is working right now, it's the cash nature of the business.
Right.
It is the big wads of cash flowing through places in Parsippany that could draw, I'll call them negative outcomes.
Yeah, that's why there's provisions for coordination with the police department, things like that. And I think that a lot of the state rules, which have yet to be promulgated, we'll probably deal with that as well.
I hope they do.
And at the end of the day, it's a total of four potential businesses. So it's so limited in number and scale that that helps.
I just, for the life of me, I don't understand why at the national level they don't do something to at least make it so that they can use banks.
Just one more comment, then I'll be quiet. If the federal government would at least acknowledge and allow medical marijuana to be legal.
Yes.
Medical marijuana. There are some who need that. Then if it were medically legal, then drugstores could dispense by prescription, could dispense whatever the doses are, whatever the prescription calls for legally. And those people that need whatever is in that THC, they could get it by prescription. And in my opinion, the federal government needs to at least allow prescriptions to be allowed. Pharmacies can't fill prescriptions now for marijuana because they would not be reimbursed by Medicare, Medicaid, or most of the private insurance companies because it's against, it's a federal crime.
Yes. Oh yeah, I mean, I agree completely. I mean, this is, if we're going to allow something, we have to allow something. We can't play this game of pretend that I find completely disingenuous and very un-American.
Well, hopefully, there will be action at the federal level at some point soon.
I've heard that for 10 years.
Yeah.
I've heard that for 10 years. And the forces engaged in trying to prevent that are surprisingly powerful.
Right, right. I think at this point, we're at almost half the states are making it legal. So there may be some tipping point at some point soon.
So I'm trying to give a little leeway here, but I do want to keep us focused on the master plan portion of this. I know this is a passionate subject for some of you, but
Quick question, yeah. So just like Tom said, right, the nature of business, right, the cash. So there are, you know, the whole money laundering situation, the layering that is, you know, people trying to put illegal money into the system, all of that. It could be a hub or, you know, place to do all of those things. So is there anything you want to, I don't know, if there is anything we should think through or, you know, put a comment back?
I think the fact that they have to get a license from the state as well will really preclude that type of activity. It's not going to, we're not going to be out on our own, out on our own figuring out who are legitimate players and who are not. There is going to be a whole state commission that is going to be reviewing these applications. That gives some comfort, I think.
Well, I'm going to say, I think, from what I've read of it, from what I've heard of it, or having read it, that you did an excellent job under the circumstances. I really do think that this is one of those documents that I don't like at all, and yet at the same time, it's as good as you could make.
Well, I have to give a lot of credit to the township attorneys. They spent many, many more hours than I did. And Councilman DiPiero, and we were on many meetings regarding this. So it was a good, good working group.
So as long as we make the changes that Councilman DiPiero suggested, I believe that I'm going to say, in my opinion, it is consistent with our master plan under the circumstances that it is a legal product.
Understood, Mr. Dinsmore. Thank you. Any other members of the board have questions or comments they'd like to share?
I do. Do we know the hours of operation?
Yes.
It's in Chapter 77.
Page 5.
Page 5.
77-8.
Thank you, Chairman. 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday.
And then they're supplying their own security staff, 7710C?
Yes.
We have nothing, the tax does not do with that?
If you see in that section elsewhere, there is involvement by the police department in terms of reviewing the security plans, having contact information for the security, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, well, alarms with the police station. All right. All right. Seeing no other hands raised among the members of the board, I'll open it up to a motion.
I would move it, Dinsmore.
All right.
Second, Hernandez.
All right, Mr. Dinsmore, is motion to find the ordinance 202114 consistent with our master plan.
As amended.
As amended. And this has been seconded by Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion to be made on the motion? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Nora?
Mr. DeDich.
Yes.
Councilman DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your commentary on that. I appreciate it. Moving on to application 21504, Zimmer Tribecular on 10 Pomeroy Road, Block 737, Lot 7. I see we have representation.
Yes.
You can move up to the front mic if you would like. That one is generally reserved for the members of the public.
Can you even take a seat?
I'll sleep.
Feel free to move it. I don't know what I did to it.
Standing okay, sitting?
Standing and sitting are both acceptable for you, sir.
Richard Skolnik, on behalf of the applicant, Zimmer Tribecular Medical Technology Yank. And Zimmer is a medical device company that specializes in innovative orthopedic medical devices, including devices for limbs, shoulders, hip implants, and other products such as dental implants. It's been the occupant of the existing structure at 10 Pomeroy for about 15 years. And the building there is about 118,000 square feet, and the parcel is about 11 acres. 10 Pomeroy is identified on the tax maps as Block 737, Lot 7, and it's located in the township's SED-5A Zone. And we're here tonight just for minor site plan approval with one very minor variance, and that's for the height of the fence, six feet permitted and eight feet proposed, and that's simply a safety precaution. We just have one witness, Mr. Chairman, that's Christine Vaccaro, our civil engineer, but we also have a number of other people here in case there are questions. We have our architect, Terry Jacobs, and we have a number of the operational folks from Zimmer. If you have any questions, the facility manager, the process manager, and the plan engineer. And Mr. Vaccaro will go over the site plan changes. I do know one thing about Ms. Vaccaro, which I endeavored to work out in advance, but I understand is a substitute board attorney. She is a graduate of Villanova University. She has seven years' experience as a civil engineer. She has passed her licensing exam. She's been approved by the New Jersey Board of Engineers. She's a couple of days away from getting her license number. So we'd like to have her qualified as an expert. We do have Darren Phil from her office, her boss, is here as well, if you need any confirmation of Ms. Vaccaro's testimony. And she has testified once before at an informal board proceeding. She's never been qualified. It's her first time. We'd like to do so tonight. Everything is in order, except for that final license number.
Well, everybody has to have a first time for everything, right?
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're here for. And she'll go through her qualifications. It'll ultimately be up to the board to decide if she has the experience to testify.
We'll review it at that time.
I appreciate it. Which time is right now?
Okay, well, before we move on to your testimony, we would like to review the waivers and get those out of the way.
Sure.
Right. Customs, you go through the checklist. So, you know, we had asked for a little bit more information during testimony, which I assume will be provided on any, whether there are any protective covenants or deed restrictions. Otherwise, we did recommend the waivers requested by the applicant in terms of more detail on storm drainage, landscaping, you know, construction, construction and storage areas, traffic study, and then tree removal. Given the, you know, limited nature of the proposed improvements, it's on a previously disturbed portion of the applicant's site, within the enclosed area that's already fully developed.
Okay. Any members of the board have questions or concerns about the waivers that have been presented? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and accept the waivers as offered. Please go ahead and continue.
That I note, I like the sitting format, similar to the Zoom, and I just dropped about 20 pounds, just with the headshots. So we'll call Christine Vaccaro, an expert in the field of civil engineering. Christine, if you want to bring the board over. Okay, and I'm going to ask that you be sworn in.
Yes. Don't argue by hand and dussweer or affirm to tell the truth before the planning board this evening.
Yes.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
It's Christine Vaccaro.
And your address, your business address?
Business address, it's in Route 206 in Flanders, New Jersey.
And Ms. Vaccaro, can you provide your professional qualifications to the board, including your educational background, your experience in the field of civil engineering?
I have a bachelor's science from Villanova University, and I have been practicing for seven years in the civil engineering field.
And have you been involved in the design of site plan and similar applications?
Yes, I have.
And you testified before one board informally?
Correct.
Okay, and this will be your first time?
Correct.
Being recognized as an expert in one exceptional qualifications?
Yes, that's correct.
And were you involved in the preparation of the plans that we submitted to the board for tonight's hearing?
Yes.
Chairman, I submit Ms. Vaccaro as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Okay.
Would you please spell your last name?
It's V as in Victor, A-C-C-A-R-O. Thank you.
All right. Do any members of the board have any questions regarding Ms. Vaccaro's qualifications? All right, seeing none, you are an acceptable witness tonight.
Thank you. Congratulations. Christine, can you provide an overview of what's in front of the board, and if you use the plans, just call out the sheet number, and these plans are exactly what we have submitted to the board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You can go over there. Take the microphone. And just speak loudly.
Take the microphone.
No, take the microphone.
There's one sitting on the table, just so you don't pull it in and out all the time.
Excellent. You may have to turn it off.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So these are the same plans submitted to the board, so it's just exactly the same as what you had in front of you. As Rick mentioned, we're in the SED-five-A zone. The lot is bound by Pomeroy Road to the west and freshwater wetlands to the east. The directly adjacent surroundings are all wooded, and all of the properties adjacent have industrial manufacturing or business uses. There are no residential uses adjacent to the site. In the second sheet, I'm just gonna pass through its some checklist items, the two-hundred-foot list and the legend. The next is our existing conditions plan. The site is currently developed with the existing building that Rick also mentioned, with parking to the south of the building. The topography slopes from Pomeroy Road on the west side to the wetlands on the east side.
And if you call out the sheet number for us, so that we reflect in the record?
And then sheet number four, the site layout plan, shows all of the proposed conditions. I'll start first with the proposed concrete, or proposed building for chlorine storage. It's approximately fifteen, or sorry, I apologize. It is approximately forty-two by thirty feet, and it is surrounded by concrete bollards on all sides. Then next, there is further south, a fifteen-by-twenty-foot concrete pad that has argon chemical storage that's surrounded by fence, fencing and concrete bollards. The next, further south, is the hydrogen chemical storage. Those are for tube trailers. It's on about approximately a sixty-by-twenty-four-foot concrete pad that's surrounded by the eight-foot fence with barbed wire, and it also has weather protection above it.
And these substances are currently being used at the facility, correct?
Correct.
With the purpose of the application to lower the number of deliveries and make the business operations more efficient.
Correct.
Okay, and again, Chairman, we have a more detailed testimony from the operating, but we're here as a permitted use, so if the board needs more information, we have other folks from Zimmer to get into the details.
Okay. And then as Rick mentioned, these are existing chemicals, but now they'll be transported via a pipe bridge that's elevated off the ground into the existing facility. So that eliminates the handling from deliveries into the building by taking it straight to the building via a pipe bridge. The other improvements include parking adjustments. According with the National Fire Protection Agency, the parking layout had to be adjusted slightly. We maintain the most critical setback, which is twelve feet off of the hydrogen tube trailers. There's also a two-hour wall on the west side of the hydrogen tube trailers to allow for that parking setback. We also have some concrete bollards for additional protection in front of the parking spaces there.
And the site, although we do lose a couple of parking spaces, it still complies with the township's parking requirements in all businesses, correct?
Correct. So the bulk standards in Chapter four thirty, we're compliant with all of the bulk standards for the subject site and the proposed improvements. And as Rick just mentioned, the parking is compliant on-site. We have a hundred and sixty-four spaces required. Currently, there are a hundred and seventy-six, and we're proposing to reduce to one hundred and sixty-four, which is compliant to allow for space for these chemical storages. We have worked with Zimmer vomit, and at this time, they don't anticipate any detrimental impacts to the parking reduction, and that will meet their current needs. And then we can flip to the next site plan sheet, Sheet five, the grading plan. And I'm just gonna pass through this briefly. Generally, there's no change in topography because it's just the minor addition of the building and these concrete pads. The drainage patterns will remain unchanged, as discussed, from Pomeroy Road to the wetlands. Just some very minor changes to include those concrete pads.
And what sheet number are we on now?
Now, we're on six. So Sheet six is just the lighting plan. Most of this is existing lighting. We just relocated one of the light poles to allow for adequate circulation, and we maintain, by placing it where it is, maintain adequate coverage. It was the board engineer's comment to protect this light with extra bollards, if that was the best location, and we can provide, we will provide revised plans showing protection for the light pole with bollards. And I'll continue to page seven. We show two truck circulation plans. The largest truck that circulates through the existing site and will circulate under proposed conditions is a WB sixty-seven interstate semi-trailer. And then the WB forty is just to show the delivery and pickup of the hydrogen tube trailers, which you can see on the bottom of that sheet. And then the last sheet is just the construction details for the security fence, pavement, concrete pad, and some signage and striping.
Okay, and before we go into the overview of the review letters, we had an architectural rendering to give the board a little better view. Could you post that up? Okay, and this is the exact drawing colorized that was in our submission package. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And this is obviously consistent with the site plan drawings?
That is correct.
Let's go over this briefly. We have the architect here.
All right. Well, I think you've identified, since this is a colorized version, I think you've identified this as A one zero two?
We can, but we actually put the colorized version.
Oh, okay.
So you have the exact colorized version. Folks have that? I think that's it, yeah.
It's hard to get these moved all over.
Fair enough. Okay, let's mark it as A one.
It's the last sheet, I believe, in the architect's drawings.
Sheet A one oh two, rendered. Okay, can you just go over, you referenced the building for some chlorine storage in the other, and can you just give that visual picture?
Sure. This is the chlorine storage building discussed with the concrete bollards surrounding it. And then further south is the argon pad surrounded with a fence, and there will be concrete bollards around the argon pad as well. Next is the hydrogen tank pad, and you can see how the truck would access and back in for the hydrogen tube trailers, and then the proposed parking. You can also see on your plans, or maybe you can see this far, the bollards in front of the parking to protect that hydrogen pad as well.
Okay, now there are gases involved, so the applicant has had some meetings. We received a review letter from the fire department. There were some comments. Any issues with the comments of, of Sippin District six?
No, we don't anticipate any issues, and we can comply with all those comments.
Okay, there was actually a meeting with the townships, I guess OEM, Office of Emergency Management?
That is correct, and I believe October twenty-third of last year.
Okay, and we're certainly ready for any condition of approval to follow up with the construction drawings and to make sure the fire department and the OEM sign off on the final plans.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and there was a review letter from DHSJ, April fifteen, twenty twenty-one. That included the trailers. Any issues with any of the comments?
No issues. We can comply with all those comments.
And I'm sure the test engineer's gonna speak for himself. Anything you think you need to address from the township engineer review letter? Let's see what we've talked about. The security fencing you mentioned, can you just talk about that and why Zimmer wants to go to eight feet instead of the six?
Yes. So for site security and Department of Homeland Security requirements, Zimmer would like to have an eight-foot instead of your six-foot allowed with a barbed wire top for the hydrogen tube trailers only.
So the eight-foot includes the barbed wire or not? It's higher than, it's eight-foot fence and then barbed wire?
Correct. Eight-foot fence and then barbed wire.
DHS requires that.
How many feet is barbed wire?
I would say about a foot, no more than a foot. But I can double-check and provide.
You could certainly provide a drawing, you know, ultimately, that shows the exact height of the barbed wire.
Yes.
And that's just for the smaller area? That's just for one of the containers?
Yes, it's just for the hydrogen at the southernmost point.
You had another questions on the review letter. I just wanted to make sure that the engineering letter is completed or satisfactory.
Why don't you take it over on the things that are more, if you don't mind, Chairman, I'll defer to your review here, or you can take it through.
We can go to that.
Okay.
The same thing, I just wanted to make sure that the engineering letter was able to be complied with, if there are any questions on that. And I have to admit that I do have a question about the, I know the truck drivers can do a really fantastic job. It seems awfully tight for backing into that hydrogen storage area each time. So is there anybody here that can?
Well, we ran the radii, right? We ran the truck turning radius. Can go back to that?
Yeah, I can. It just seems awfully, between the light pole and the other buildings, and having to make that little switch.
We'll go over, and we have some of the operational folks. I'm sure they designed it in a way that makes sense. I appreciate it.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty good at driving those things.
Yeah, so that's the, on Sheet seven, the bottom circulation.
Right. The pit two in there just seems like it's gonna be really tight.
Oh, so there would only be one truck at a time. They would just.
It should show two on the plan, it's on the reason. These are shown side by side.
Yes, I apologize. So there will be two trailers, but only one delivery at a time. So they'll drop off the new and pick up the empty.
I have no further comments on it. I just thought that was being very tight. If you have any testimony on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Susan, any other questions from you?
No, Chairman, mine were answered. Thank you.
Okay. I'll open up to members of the board. Any questions for Ms. Vaccaro from board members? Mr. Mandell?
Yep. You're not protecting the chlorine storage with a high fence?
The chlorine storage, I'll bring this rendering back up again, is enclosed within a building. You can't have a fence. So the building will be locked, and deliveries only come through this roll-up door, and then the one other access door, and it's also surrounded by bollards, which were requested by the OEM during that meeting.
I would not expect that. And in case of a leak, what sort of ventilation do you have on that chlorine storage?
That's not something I can necessarily speak on, I don't believe, but I know that the anticipation is to use a special technology that won't require scrubbing for the tanks with inside the building.
I would appreciate some sort of knowledge, just in case of a leak, because cylinders do leak.
We have someone, and that's why, that's why you have all these guys back here.
That's fine, thank you. That's my former life. I dealt with gases, so.
Mr. Attorney, it looks like they want to bring forward another witness.
Are you through with this witness?
Come on up. We're here. You're gonna have to get some more ahead.
We can just swear, amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you swear, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the planning board this evening?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, just state your name and spell it, please.
William McDonald, MAC, D O I N A L D.
All right. And your qualifications, sir?
I'm a process engineer. I have a P S in mechanical engineering, and I work for Zimmer vomit. I've been there for about eighteen years now.
Understood. All right.
He's really gonna be a back witness.
Okay, okay.
Not the expert, but you heard the question?
It's borderline, yes.
Yeah, it's borderline.
Okay.
It's a land use procedure, so.
Yeah, to answer your question, one thing we're considering with this new proposal, obviously, we don't have the details finalized yet, but we are looking at this container called a chem container, chlor container, I'm sorry. The chlor container would actually entirely encapsulate the tonner, two-thousand-pound chlorine container that's in there. So internal to it, it's gonna have all the conditions, the sensors it needs to understand whether or not there is a leak. But whether or not there is a leak, it's still gonna be fully encapsulated while it's on-site.
Okay, so it's a little bit like the new oil tanks with two walls?
I suppose so, yeah. It's a, it's a company that makes it specifically for this application.
Okay. Thank you.
Stay here.
Just in case, yeah.
I don't have to answer anything at the moment.
Other questions from the board? Go ahead, Ms. Veely.
Susan, I was just curious, did you consider the structure an accessory building for a height variance from fifteen feet?
Yeah, I think we did talk about this, maybe.
You're jogging my memory.
It is an accessory building, and so I think there is that height, minimum height, or maximum height, I should say, on fifteen feet. So we should probably add that as a variance to allow. What is the height of that building?
I think your report said it was twenty-four feet. That's what made me, triggered me to, right, the chlorine storage building.
Twenty-four feet in height. Is that correct? Can you verify the height?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, so, I'm sorry, I don't have my mic. So you need a variance to exceed the maximum fifteen-foot in height. You can add that to the board's consideration.
We can do that, right.
No other question?
Other board members?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. McPaw.
Currently, are there any gases stored there now?
We do, yes. We store gases there. We actually use the same gases in our current process.
But they're much smaller now.
That's correct, yeah. We have a smaller area where we do store them. This will be a larger area, but because of smaller, currently smaller containers, we do a lot more transit back and forth. So this new plan will have a lot less transit associated with it.
All right, and how often are these deliveries gonna be?
Roughly, the hydrogen might be once a month, and I'm expecting to point out our current levels to be maybe like about eight days per cylinder.
And the argon?
Today, we have many more smaller cylinders than we do.
Okay. And the argon, similar, month?
Yeah, the argon might be a long time, yeah. It's gonna be in liquid form.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, just a, just some of my own questions. So based on the amount of material that you're storing, did you have to address any additional safety requirements with certain regulatory agencies? What were those agencies?
Yeah, currently, we're signed up with the DEP under the TCPA program. Since twenty-eighteen, we've been signed up with them for chlorine very specifically. That's the only item that we're over, we're a limit for that. So like I said, in twenty-eighteen, we signed up with them, were part of their program.
Okay.
We will need to be, in the future, once we go to this plan, we'll have to also be signed up for the OSHA PSM plan as well. But we're not there yet. We don't need to, based upon the current levels.
But with this new existing level, you would?
We'll have to go to an OSHA PSM as well. It's very similar, mine was saying very similar to the DCPM plan.
Okay. And a question for engineer, are you meeting all the requirements of the regulatory agencies with this plan?
Yes.
Okay. And I think I heard you said the argon would be in liquid form, the chlorine will be in gas form, the hydrogen also in gas form?
Yeah, liquid, the chlorine actually comes in liquid form, and it creates vapor.
Oh, okay. All right, so it'll be stored as a liquid?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Sir, you may continue.
That's really it, Chairman. Again, you have the architect, but you've seen the rendering. It's a minor site plan, and we have the other informational witnesses, but we're satisfied with the presentation. It was the new variance called that, or it does have a major issue, please let us know. know, we can try to address that.
Okay, well then at this time, I'll open up to the general public and see if there's any questions from the public.
Chris, you can sit if you'd like.
Any members of the public have questions? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public portion, and I'll open it up to any questions or comments from the board members. Any concerns about the application, anything you'd like to put on the record? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up for a motion.
So moved, Mandel.
What's the motion that you're presenting?
To approve their application with the change in the variance for the height of the auxiliary building?
Accessory building.
Accessory building.
Yeah, and I think we also have the condition on the fire and OEM approval, which is part of our normal practice anyway.
And they were gonna revise the plan at the bollards at the light, to protect the light that they moved that's in the parking area?
They had agreed to the, just revised the drawings.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second to Jerry.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Do you have an opportunity for debate? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask Nora to call the roll.
Didich?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Linzmore?
Yes.
Brighieri?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, if I may, a very minor shout out, not minor really, to Councilman Di Piero, because I can tell you that I was the student council president of Parsippany High School in nineteen eighty-one, forty years ago. Mr. Di Piero, I think was on the board of that, may have given me my diploma, my graduation, and I often think as his owning lawyer that I've gone to a lot of municipal meetings, and I have over a thirty-two year legal career, and I'm driving up here on Route 287 and I'm saying to myself, after having seen the agenda, how many municipal meetings has Mr. Di Piero gone? I went to high school with him.
That would be a very interesting figure to check out.
I wonder if he ever computed that, so, you know, I wouldn't do that, I didn't, I said this to you after I got my quote, because it is a lot. But I can only imagine the public service of all these meetings. Did you ever try to count up Mr. Di Piero?
Between the school board and the township council and the planning board, it's been forty-six years.
Forty-six years?
As an elected official.
Well, congratulations, I couldn't do it, but Chairman, thank you for that little digression on a night when you're not too busy, but that's a, that's a lot of meetings, that's a lot, that's a lot of public service.
It is, is for sure, so congratulations, your application has been approved.
Thank you, thank you for your talk.
All right. All right, next we have the application number twenty-one, colon, five zero six, Amon Lawandi, fifty-six Upper Rainbow Trail, Lot 117, Lot 27 and 28, minor subdivision with C variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, for the record. My name is Richard Oller. I'm a stander, so.
No problem.
I'm talking on stand.
However you're comfortable, sir.
Thank you. So again, my name's Richard Oller, for the record, O L L E R, attorney for the applicant, Amon Lawandi. Our application this evening is with respect to properties located at fifty-six Upper Rainbow Trail, which property is in the R three zone. Our application is for minor subdivision, really a lot line adjustment between Mr. Lawandi's property at Lot 27 and the adjacent property owned by the Rainbow Lakes Association, Lot 28. Mr., both of those lots, incidentally, Lot 27 and Lot 28 are both undersized, non-conforming lots, as they are today. We're making Mr. Lawandi's a little bit bigger, the association lot a little bit smaller by sliding the lot line over. There are some existing non-conformities on the lot that Mr. Lawandi now owns, which he purchased very recently. The shed that serves that lot is completely on Lot 28, as it exists today. The garage for that property actually extends into the roadway right of way. All of those things would go away, the shed, the garage, the house, and then we're proposing a new home on Mr. Lawandi's property, Lot 22. That, the location of the home, has some bulk variances associated with it. Our application shows front yard, side yard, rear yard, building coverage, some lot coverage. The yard, the bulk requirements, were responded to in both your planner's report and your engineer's report, and thank you for getting that to us so early, so we had the opportunity to meet there and kind of take a look at a few things, and we've submitted in advance some exhibits that we're going to show you this evening, which will change that location. We're going to propose a different location for that along the way. We'll go through that with you with the testimony. Have three witnesses this evening, Mr. Lawandi is here for questions if something comes up, but our first witness will be Fred Stewart, the site engineer, our architect, Michael Bush, and the planner, David Karlback. As I said, Mr. Lawandi's here too, if there's any questions. So unless there's any preliminary question with respect to the application, we get to Mr. Stewart.
We would just like to review the waivers before we get started.
For, um, no, no waivers requested or any comments on the waivers, we just asked for additional testimony on several items, which I assume will be provided. I also want to note for the board's knowledge that you'll start seeing reference to the Highlands in future applications, now that the township's fully in the Highlands and is subject to, to those rules, this one is however not, not subject to Highlands review because it's under three units, that's a, that's a threshold. So that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so since there's no waivers to accept, we'll go ahead and move forward with testimony.
Okay, and I'd like to call Fred Stewart, please.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the planning board this evening?
Yes, I do.
Will you state your name and spell it for the record, please, sir?
Fred Stewart, S T E W A R T, Restored Surveying and Engineering, 148 East Main Street, Apollo, New Orleans.
Thank you, Fred, would you review both your professional and additional background for the board, please?
Sure, I graduated from County College of Morris with a certificate in surveying in nineteen eighty-six. I received my surveyor's license from State of New Jersey in nineteen ninety-one. I graduated from NJIT with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering in nineteen ninety-six, received my professional engineer's license from State of New Jersey in nineteen ninety-nine. I've been practicing in land surveying and civil engineering since nineteen eighty-four, my own business since the year two thousand, last twenty-one years, we brought away.
All right, please pull the microphone closer to you, thank you.
A little closer.
All right.
And is your professional license in good standing in State of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer Mr. Stewart as a professional engineer.
Do any members of board have questions about Mr. Stewart's qualifications? All right, seeing none, Mr. Stewart, you're an acceptable witness, and go ahead.
Thank you.
So Fred, we initially offered a plan which had some, kind of centered the house to the new proposed lot, correct?
That's correct.
And in response to the engineer's report and the planner's report, we're rethinking that a little bit now, correct?
That's correct.
Can you, oh, Mr. Chairman, would you like us to mark the exhibit, the new plan that we've discussed?
Yes, please do.
So that will be A1 for identification to this date, Fred, please.
So the materials in front of us are a little bit off?
The materials that were submitted with the application are a little bit stale, then based on the reports we have, we're proposing a different location. But there were additional plans submitted within the last week or so.
Last week.
So we need to cap those for the season.
Do we have the last one?
Yes.
We should have it.
July eighth, that's right, the, Stewart's plan is July seventh, the architectural plan is July eighth.
All right, I see that they're stamped on the A.
Sorry. So then mark.
Yeah.
A1, as, Stewart Surveying and Engineering LLC, it's one sheet, with revision dates July seventh, twenty twenty-one. Fred, would you describe to the board with the revisions that you're mentioning?
Sure. Basically, what we did with the revisions is we relocated the proposed dwelling over towards the west side of the property to allow for a compliant side yard of ten feet, or ten point one feet is what we show, that your zone requires ten feet. And that's basically against the neighboring property, Lot 26, which has an adjacent dwelling on it. Now, that dwelling's approximately eleven feet at the front corner, leaning off the sideline, so this way appearances, you know, you have full compliance with the zoning between the two dwellings on, on either property, which aesthetically I would agree with, I do like that this layout much better, again, it does comply with the side yard, allowing, I guess, for lack of a better term, some breathing room between the two dwellings, which is based on your zoning. In doing that, it does shorten the other side yard, which we formerly had, we've got six feet down to two feet, against the new proposed lot line, which I might add is basically like the observed boundary between the two properties right now. As you can see from the existing conditions, as shown on the left side of the property, of my drawing, we have a shed and a driveway are actually approaching onto the neighboring property of Lot 28. This new lot line, basically, the compasses observe boundary, and this is basically where the real property line should be, I guess, because the channel acts as a manmade boundary, your natural boundary, depending on which end you're looking at, the ditch and the channel. So basically, that's where we're relocating the lot line, and that's where we place the home, be two feet off that lot line, requiring a variance from your combined side yard as well, which would be down from twenty feet total, which we are requesting a twelve foot variance for that, and a two foot variance for the single side yard, what we required is ten feet.
And Fred, just for clarification, the plan that's now marked A1 still holds the same proposed lot line, correct?
That's correct.
The change of the real location of that?
That's all that we modified, the rotation of the proposed lot.
Now, it was moved back a little bit too for the driveway distance?
That's correct, the home was reconfigured and we pushed the base of the garage back further, I believe we had it at fifteen feet, somewhere around there previously.
Thirteen?
We are now at eighteen feet at the closest point, which helps the situation for parking within the driveway, we're out of the right of way for a parked car in front of the garage. And I will note that within the garage, that's an additional stall, so there's two parking stalls, but a new one on me, we have, which yards looking well on a little bit, we actually have a lift within the garage which adds third parking stall, if you can say, to lift in the garage.
And the architect will describe that?
Yes.
Yes.
We are keeping the same setback as the existing dwelling from the Rainbow Lake, which is at fifteen point eight feet, which we do show the proposed dwelling being at fifteen point eight feet. I will state that the existing dwelling is at that same dimension.
Fred, just want to run down the engineer's report, I think, as well, starting with the engineering comments and recommendations, I think everything prior to that was like informational, but in paragraph number one, indicates that we should indicate that we're doing this by subdivision D or, or by, by, as you asked, proposed to be by D.
That's correct.
Number two is that proposed lot number should, should, should start with twenty-seven, twenty-one, and confirm that with the tax assessor, and that's certainly appropriate issue, we agree, of course, to do that.
Yes.
Number three, the plan should identify the northern property boundary for each lot, in addition to proposed northern boundary distances should be verified for both lots.
Yes, we can do that, we typically show along the shoreline a tie distance from the two corners, in this way.
Just to be careful, the Lot 28, the distance there is ninety-four point thirty-six feet, and underneath that is ninety-four point thirty-six, I think that's supposed to be the proposed distance there?
Yes, we have to modify that, thank you.
Then in number four, water service and sanitary lateral should be depicted on the plan, two of three?
Yes.
I would also note that we do have a report from the Water Department indicating that there was no objection or comment of the plan.
Yes.
Number five is a separate plan should be provided to clearly indicate the site demolition and site erosion control measures, do we agree to that, Fred?
Yes, we agree.
Six is the applicant should provide testimony regarding what outside agency approvals, permits are required, provide an update on the status of the NJDDT fresh water wet and low-ye application, do we agree to provide that?
I tried to contact the EP, and from what I understand, there's still no moving on that, that permit, as of today.
So it's been submitted, but nothing further from the EP?
That's correct.
And again, an appropriate condition that we would obtain?
Yes.
Number seven is the plan should note if easements exist or if they are supposed to the ditch slash channel, chamber, or canopy. I, we're not proposing any easements, what that ditch canopy still remains on the HOA or the association plot, not on Mr. Lawandi's lot, may impose control over their own lot.
I always ask.
Yep, yep, yep. Eight, applicant should provide testimony regarding the allowed building envelope for each lot.
Oh, sure, I can actually state that right now, the Lot 27, the building envelope is shown, it's actually a odd shaped triangle area within the proposed dwelling, if you want me to go to the floor.
Oh, is that what that is? Okay, I see, I see, all right.
Right, this area here?
Yes.
That is the building envelope, it's probably about twenty feet wide on this side, about five feet wide on this side, and by about thirty feet.
Okay.
That's not the size of the building envelope. As for Lot 18, just extend that out, that would be a very small triangle, it would just look like, to be honest, we get two lines very close together.
Okay.
I'm just spotting this to show you what that would be, we're breaking that section there, because it's definitely a property, it's in the front of your wall, just a compass, compass.
Thank you.
And number nine, the proposed conditions plan should indicate the material utilized for the proposed driveway?
That's going to be a paved driveway.
Ten is due to the magnitude of the bulk variance request, the applicant should submit a Lot 27 conceptual lot grading plan that includes site topo and maintenance patterns.
Yes, we can comply with that.
Eleven is the applicant should testify if trees are to be removed as far as the improvements?
Uh, yes, there will be, there's actually four trees on site that are significant size. The first tree is near the proposed subdivision line between the shed and the ditch, that's gonna be basically right on the subdivision line, and that tree will be removed, I believe that's approximately a eighteen or fifteen inch tree on that side. On the east street side of the property, there's actually three trees that are located off the concrete patio, between the concrete patio and the east street alley line, that would be breaking this section here, there's three trees, I'm just spotting it, approximately one, two, and three. The third one is the largest one, near the boundary line, it is on our property, that's approximately a thirty inch sized tree. The one closer to the road, just in front of that one, that's about a twenty-one inch tree, I believe that's a peach. First one I was talking about, I believe is an oak. And the first tree over here, which is closer to the lake, then a larger oak, again, that's another oak, and that's a, approximately an eighteen inch tree. Most likely, we will be taking those trees down due to the construction of the home, as you see, we're only ten feet off the sideline, I would say at least those two trees will come down, as far as the third tree, we can try and keep it, but I can't guarantee it, and it is a fairly large tree, if that ever fell, that's a safety issue really, if that falls either way, totally destroying each one of these homes, and hopefully not, but hurt someone too as well. So basically, we're trying to keep the third one, or the larger oak, but honestly, being after approximating the new home, I don't think it would actually survive.
Are there any plantings?
We could provide some plantings along the boundary to replace those trees, probably with some smaller ornamental trees, possibly, they could move, move the, the large. some smaller ornamental trees, possibly, they could remove the larger one. And we do, after we show those on the plan, we revise accordingly.
Yes, if you could show the location of the existing, if you're able?
We could show them.
Great.
Existing trees and the proposed trees as well.
And you've already covered, out of number 12, you made the driveway longer.
Yes.
I have no further questions, so if you can submit those revised plans, and I'd be satisfied.
Okay, great.
I have no other questions.
All right. Ms. Vate, did you have any other questions for Mr. Stewart?
Just a couple, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the change on the house. That was sort of consistent with what we were suggesting, you know, relocating and also potentially reducing the size. It does look like you've reduced the size of the homes. Is that accurate?
I believe we did, but I think the architect did part of that.
Okay, the architect can verify. And maybe this is a question for the architect. I was a bit confused about the changes to the percentages on the building coverage and lot coverage. Why, I think, one went down, one went up, from what was previously proposed, and I didn't understand.
Possibly because we walk in the driveways, why the lot coverage was modified. Might have a slightly different configuration than we had there.
Okay, okay. And can you confirm, I don't know if this is even still relevant, given the changes to the home, but previously, you had a, there was a chimney on the east side of the home, and it wasn't clear whether the side yard was, you know, to the facade of the home or the chimney was jutting out just a bit.
You were correct within your report, it's a chimney, I believe you said, right?
Chimney, yeah.
A chimney on the westbound boundary?
Mm-hmm.
That's about a .8 offset.
Okay.
The chimney is not labeled, just a clear box next to their front, for the front corner of the home, just a home.
Okay, that's all I have for this witness.
Before I open up to the board, I just wanted to make sure, we got the Rainbow Lake's HOA's approval on this, correct?
We did, yes. We signed consent forms from them, and we agreed with them that we wouldn't move that line, which is why we wanted on the record that with the change that we've given you, we haven't moved the proposed subdivision line.
Okay. All right. Do any board members have questions for the engineering witness?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fajari?
Yes, hi. This may be due to my inexperience reading your plans, but what is the proposed height of the home at its peak?
We're going to be in compliance with the ordinance.
I appreciate that, but what would it be?
Finally, a better question for the architect.
Okay.
He'll have that on his plan, if you can actually see the elements.
All right, and I have a follow-up for that. And then, can you answer the difference in permeable coverage, available permeable coverage now, compared to what it would be once the house was built? What are we losing?
We listed that on the zoning table. The building coverage requires that 15%. Existing is at 27.3%. Our proposed is at 34.5%. So it's an increase in the building coverage.
By 7 or 8%, if I'm doing my math correctly?
Yeah, by 7.2%.
Yeah, more than twice of what's generally allowed, just to follow up with that.
Yes, but you see the lot size, that's more likely the lot.
I think that's it for me at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah, I have a question, because I went out to look today at 59 up a rainbow trail, and there wasn't 59, so it was 57 and 63. It is, I'm trying to picture where it's very, I know it's an odd, hm?
56.
56, not 59. Okay.
Yeah, if you were standing on the.
Maybe that's why, because I probably had the wrong number in my head.
If you were looking at the boat launch lot?
Yeah.
Right, where there's nothing, you know, just used to boat launching to the right of that, would be this lot we're talking about.
Okay. All right, cool. And the, I know we were just talking about the increase in the impermeable, is there, I guess you guys looked at this, does channel lot affect anything with the lake?
No.
With any increased storm water flowing into the lake?
No, the channel, from what I can tell, is barely uses some sort of overflow for the lake, coming out of the lake, not going in.
All right. Thank you, that's it.
Ms. Veely?
My only question would, would I be addressing you to just go over the variances that were needed?
Sure, I can do that. I know our plan will go in more detail than that, but I can just state what we have on here.
For lot 27?
Yep, for lot 27. Basically, there's no principal structure on lot 28, so setbacks will apply. Okay, for lot area, required's at 15,000 square feet. Our existing lot 27's at 3,579 square feet. We're proposing a 900 square feet addition to it, which would equate to 4,479 square feet. Same for lot 28, we're deleting that by 900 square feet, so existing's at 5,621, and proposed is at 4,721. As far as the lot width goes, required's 100 feet. Our existing lot 27 is at 50.18. Proposed would be at 63.39, so that's an increase, which is bettering the situation. Existing lot 28 is at 95.63 feet. Proposed lot 28 is at 82.41 feet. That's a decrease, but we're basically trying to equal these out or get them close to being more balanced lots, from that standpoint. The front yard, required's at 40 feet. Existing lot 27 is at zero, because the garage is basically approaching into the right-of-way, and that garage will be removed and replaced with a driveway in that area. Proposed lot 27, the front setback is going to 18 feet, which is to the left front garage corner. The house steps back from there. The side yard, 10 feet and 20 feet combined, 10 foot 1, I should say, and 20 feet combined. Existing lot 27, we're at 0.8 feet, which is to the chimney on the west side, and on the right-hand side, we're at 17.9 feet, sort of combined, which is actually wrong in my table, state 17.9, but the actual combined is at 18.7, so I will revise that accordingly. And that's a variance as well. Proposed lot 27, we're going to 2 feet from the west line, and 12.1, I'm sorry, combined would be 12.1 as a total, and it's 10.1 from the east, which is in compliance. The rear yard, 20 foot's required, we're at 15.8 feet existing, and we're going to be 15.8 feet proposed. As far as building height and stories and feet will be in compliance. Building coverage, 15% is required, 27.3% is existing, we're going to 34.5%. Maximal lot coverage, 30% is required. Existing lot 27, they're at 44%. Proposed lot 27's at 44.5%. Those are the variances.
And driveway variance for 5 feet. Driveways, further zoning orange, that'd be 5 feet. Good call. So it looks like it's 1 foot.
Yes, good call.
So I just wanted to confirm, that's nine variances on the lot. I just, because the lot pages are large, and I don't want to hit everybody next to me, I just wanted to, I was writing, jotting them down, but I can't flip to the other page. So that's nine, right? Would that be correct, nine on lot 27? Lot area, lot width, front yard, side yard, both side yards, rear yard, driveway, building, and impermeables?
Yes.
Correct.
Our plan will be testifying to the variance as well.
Okay. Thank you.
What I had with the side yard of 2 feet, that sideline there, near the ditch, is actually backs up, or is against a wooded area that further buffers from the launch area, which is basically a maintained lawn area, which is only about 50 feet wide. But the wooded area, the maintained lawn area is about 50 feet wide, making 100-foot lot width for that, leaves a lot 28. So it is a nice natural buffer between what we are proposing and the boat launch area.
But you're not proposing anything on lot 28?
No, we are not.
However, once we create the subdivision, what is to stop you to come back and put a home on that down future, once we've simplified it?
We don't own that lot, that would be the association's.
That's the association's. So they, is it individual owner or owned by the association?
Owned by the association.
Owned by the association.
Are you aware of any restrictions on that lot, in terms of future development?
I'm not, and owned by the association.
Because it's not your lot.
Yeah.
Understood.
But it is owned by the association for use as a boat launch.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineering witness?
I have one. There's this, thank you, this Studio 443D, this one here, on the top left, it says, "This site plan is reference-only legal site plan prepared by Stewart Survey dated 8/28/2021." Is that accurate?
That's the architect's plans.
All right, so.
I think, are you referencing a date?
Yeah, the date on there.
In the future?
Yeah, yeah, right? Future date.
So, yeah.
So these don't count, then?
Not yet.
I think they just misdated it.
Okay, so this is, should I say 2020?
The thing is, that's not the site plan, we're relying on, relying on the engineer.
On this one here. Got you. All right. Thanks, that's it.
Okay.
Quick question.
Ms. Tadish?
Yep, so is there a sidewalk on the inbound trail, or?
On Rainbow Trail, there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk?
No, it's only 30 foot wide right-of-way, most of that's taken up by the actual plate of the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that concludes our questions for the engineering witness. You may continue.
Stewart, thank you. I'd like to call our architect, Bush, please.
Okay. Did you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the planning board this evening?
Yes, I did.
Okay, could you state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Michael Bush Jr., U.S.C.H. Look closer here, too.
Michael, would you review your educational background, professional background with the board?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Architecture from NJIT, and an Executive MBA from NJIT also. I've been in the architecture field for 23 years now, I've been licensed since 2008. I'm currently licensed in 28 states, practicing throughout the US, primarily in New Jersey, but I work with a lot of retail and, you know, customers who work throughout the country, and my license is in good standing in New Jersey.
And did you assist in the preparation of the plans that we're going through this stuff with the board this evening?
Yes.
And you've been to the site and familiar with the site as well?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would walk through Mr. Bush's professional architect.
All right. Any questions from the board? All right, your qualifications are acceptable, please continue.
I apologize for the date error, sorry about that. I'll make sure he knows on the way home.
Is it 2020, then?
Yeah.
I should say 2020?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I was just wondering if there are future plans coming?
It's days into the future, I guess. So, Mr. Bush, again, I'm going to ask, Mr. Chairman, we should mark this set now as A2, since they are different than what was originally submitted to the board. Mr. Bush, would you review your proposed architectural drawing with the board, and please be sure to describe the height of the home.
Okay, so first of all, when I visited the site, my first impression was that it was a really rundown house. When I saw, I was really, you know, I said, wow, this is a pretty old house, and then I walked around and I saw the lake, and I said, wow, this is really beautiful. You know, I saw that, and I said, this site has so much potential to have a beautiful house on it. So that's what I found really exciting when I first got there. And Mr. Luande was really excited about the property too, which, you know, I think, and after seeing what Fred had proposed for the site plan as far as the setbacks and how it was existing with the wooded area on the left-hand side, it all felt very comfortable to me, with putting a, putting a nice house on that property. That was the, kind of the exciting beginning to it for us as we got started with this. So, so the height of the building, we're looking at about 27 feet. That's a, it varies a little bit with the slope, but the average amongst those is about 27 feet.
What's the max?
35. So that was the.
Would that be from original grade or final grade?
It varied, the slopes, slopes, the site slopes a little bit down now, we're looking to level it out a little bit towards the middle of the house, especially with the garage, how it's laying out with the lift above it, so, yeah, it's about that height, around 27 feet in the middle. I don't think we'd ever come close to the 35-foot max that was there.
You can keep going.
Continue, or is there a specific?
No, well, Mr. Bush, I just would like you to describe what you're seeing, and show the board these architectural plans, the elevations for the front, each side, and the rear.
Sure. So, the interior concept, we were going, and I won't get into too much of the interior design, but you walked in through a best of view, there was a living room, kitchen, and dining room, and then we had access to the garage off of there, and then the second floor, there was a master bedroom and two additional bedrooms on the second floor. We're looking to achieve three bedrooms there.
Could you explain the lift, the lift for you?
So the lift, we haven't finalized exactly what type of system it would be, but we have about 13, 14 feet within the garage there, so we wanted to put some system, you know, floor-mounted, we assume, based on the way, you know, we haven't gotten to detail with it yet, but it's really to get that additional.
I'm looking at that lift, I guess, my first thought was, this is the home of a auto mechanic.
Nope, no, the intention is not for repairs. The intention is for, it's an additional car that the owner has, so he could store it within that house as well, that's the purpose. It's not intended for repairs at all.
So the lift doesn't come from the center, it comes from the sides?
Correct.
Drive another car under?
Yep, yep, that is the intention, yes.
I didn't know that existed.
Yep. I had my team doing some research on it, and that's what we were, we were landing.
So that's the first floor, second floor, so for the exterior elevations, I'll actually bring the, I'll put these down here, if you don't mind, and I'll bring up the rendering. So, Mr. Luande was really looking, one, he wanted some beautiful views of the lake, which we thought was extremely important. You know, so what we did is we tried to open up the rear as much as we could with glazing, and we're probably going to have to compromise a little bit on the glazing in the end for the size, based on the energy calculations and all those things that go with it, but the design intent is definitely have that as open as possible to the rear. So, and also, we were going for a more modern look, so, you know, again, when I was in the, when I was on the site, looking around, you know, the question is, how do we fit into the context of what's happening in the neighborhood? You know, something that would fit in color scheme-wise, architecturally, so we're still at the early stages of the design of what we intended to be, but that's our kind of overarching goals for the site. Is that your testimony?
Would you propose the color as you're showing in the plan?
Well, when I was looking around, it was a lot of pan color, beige colors, that was really the context of what was around. So I think in working with Mr. Luande, we would try to keep in that same palette, so, you know, we didn't want to make it, you know, yellow or orange or something that really popped out in the neighborhood. I think fitting in with the nature and the, you know, the amount of trees that are there, and kind of that softer palette that's in the neighborhood, I think would be most appropriate when we get to that stage.
And like you may have said this already, but what's the livable area square footage for this house?
It's about 1,100, it's a little over 1,000 square feet each floor.
Entire home, both floors, about?
Nope, nope, each floor, and then the garage is about 380 square feet or so. And I think it was such a drastic improvement from what's there now, you know, there's this little rundown house, there's the detached garage, which is right at the street, there's a shed which is hanging over, as the previous gentleman mentioned, you know, hanging over the property line, where, you know, I think we're just trying to unify the site more, you know, make it one holistic, give it some street presence, give it lake presence, you know, make it something that makes sense in the context of the neighborhood.
I have nothing else for Mr. Bush.
Any other questions from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, one more question for me. Are you aware of the average height of existing residences in the neighborhood, you know, the average building height?
I wouldn't know an exact number, but I do know just through driving, through the com- community, it probably is, is lower than that.
Right.
As a general statement, I would say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mandel.
You say you wanted to fit in with the community. Um, this is quite a bit larger than almost anything else in that community, so it definitely doesn't fit in size-wise, whether it's height or bulk. So, I mean, that's really bothering, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Will there be any changes to the drainage pattern with the roof layers or things of that nature?
Uh, yeah, I think there would have to be. I think we would work with the civil engineers. We developed it further with that. So, yeah, we're changing the whole envelope of the building. I think we would have to look at, look at all the drainage for, for the entire ten years.
Yeah, just be careful not to discharge neighbors.
Discharge onto their property, yeah.
Ms. Vili?
Um, is there a basement proposed? I didn't see like washer, dryer and some of the normal aspects that I normally see with the plan.
Yep, nope, there is no, no basement proposed.
Okay. So washer, I didn't see washer, dryer, um.
Tough place to put this.
And bathroom, I assume those are sinks?
Yep, yep, those are sinks in the bathroom. Um, we had a utility closet here, which we were gonna try to make multipurpose on the first floor, so we could, you know, probably, you know, this closet that we had here, we were gonna, you know, we'll put the water heater up, we could put something below that.
Okay. And the, uh, and the second floor outdoor deck, um, just off, off the, uh, master bedroom.
Right.
Okay.
Thought that would be a great place to have coffee in the morning.
Definitely.
Overlooking the lake.
Thank you. That's it.
Alright. Uh, did the engineer or planner have questions? I'm sorry.
He's already answered my question.
Okay.
Yeah, likewise for me as well.
Okay. Alright. It looks like, uh, the board has had all their questions answered. You may keep going.
Thank you. I'd like to call, uh, David Karlebach, please.
It's nice to be back in person, too. This is my first in-person meeting for a while.
Yes, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the planning board this evening?
I do.
Okay. Would you state your name and spell it for the record, please?
David Karlebach. K A R L E B A C H. I'm the president of David Karlebach P P P C, and my business address is ninety-six Linwood Plaza, Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Mr. Karlebach, would you, uh, review your professional background and educational background for?
Certainly. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. I also have a Master's degree in city and regional planning, also from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I have been for twenty-eight years. I previously qualified and testified before hundreds of boards throughout the state, including, uh, the Parsippany Board of Adjustment on scores of occasions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd go offer Mr. Karlebach as a professional planner.
Do any members of the board have questions about Mr. Karlebach's qualifications as planner? Alright, seeing none, Mr. Karlebach, your expert witness in, uh, planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karlebach, you've had the occasion to visit the property, is that right?
Yes, I have.
And, uh, can you tell us what you have done in preparation for the next meeting?
Well, I reviewed all of the application materials, including the, uh, site plan and the, uh, architectural plans. I reviewed the municipal zoning ordinance and two thousand and twenty master plan. Uh, I have visited the site and the surrounding areas, and I have an exhibit that I did not personally prepare, uh, but it was prepared by another licensed planner, and, uh, I believe it to be accurate and correct. I think I'd like to mark one into evidence and, and pass this around. Uh, what do we call this?
So, Mr. Chairman, this would be A three?
Three.
Call back with today's date on it.
So noted.
Um, I, I, I think I'm gonna be one short. I apologize. Pass these around.
Quick chat.
And while that's being passed around, I'll note that this is a five-page exhibit. And it was prepared by Mr. McDonough. I have reviewed this, uh, with him. And as you'll see, on the, on the first page, it's really just the, uh, a tax map or parcel map, and it shows the, uh, the subject property outlined in yellow. You have, uh, Lot twenty-seven, which is the subject parcel, and Lot twenty-eight, which is the, uh, association property, which includes the boat launch. I think it's what really this first page is showing us is the, I guess, the extreme, uh, deficiency in terms of lot depth and lot width of the subject property. And that's what is really triggering all these variances. Uh, and therein lies the hardship, of course, is the fact that this is vastly undersized, it doesn't have a lot, a lot width and lot depth that we'd expect in the R three zone. If we move to the second page, it's showing us, uh, an aerial view or an aerial photograph of the site and the surrounding area, and you could see some of the other homes in the area also are very narrow, uh, in configuration. And it also shows the abbreviated setbacks, particularly the abbreviated side yard setbacks of many of these homes, uh, within the Rainbow Lakes area. The third sheet is a land use map. Uh, what this is basically telling us is this is an exclusive, uh, low-density, I shouldn't say low-density, I take that back, medium-density, uh, residential area, uh, with the exception of the undeveloped and natural land to the south, which I believe is the Smith Track. And then, uh, we move along to page four, which really just shows us that, uh, all of these properties, uh, in the surrounding area in the R three zone. And then finally, the last sheet, uh, are just some ground shots or photographs. In the upper left-hand corner, we have the, a view of the front of the house, and note the projecting garage that comes right up to the, uh, right of way. So there is no front yard setback currently, that will be corrected. We call these snout homes because the accessory part of the building acts almost as a snout. Uh, and then the lower left, you can see that this building has fallen into disrepair. It's not being maintained on a regular basis. Um, it's an old obsolete structure, not in need of renovation, in need of replacement. And finally, uh, on the photographs on the right, it just shows two views from the rear of Lot twenty-seven, Lot twenty-eight, overlooking, uh, the beautiful lake. And I think that's what the architect's communicating, uh, just, uh, the aesthetic value of the land. So again, Lot twenty-eight really is just the, uh, boat launch property that's being decreased in size, but it's not being changed in terms of its function, function just as it does today. Um, it's, in terms of the zoning, uh, this zone is aimed at one-family dwellings on lots with a minimum lot area fifteen thousand square feet. Most of the lots in the area are undersized, uh, and the subdivision will bring Lot twenty-seven, twenty-seven closer to conformance, uh, with the zoning ordinance. So, the first thing I did is looked at the master plan and say, "Why do we have all these small lots within a zone that requires fifteen thousand square feet?" Right? Why does that happen? It's, it's not really good planning practice to have a zone that creates all these non-conformities. So I looked at the master plan, and the, the plan places this property in the medium-density residential land use category. And the medium-density category defines a housing density of approximately six to ten units per acre. And it goes on to say that corresponds to the R four district, okay? It goes on to say this designation corresponds to the Lake Parsippany, Lake Hiawatha and Rainbow Lakes neighborhoods. So recognition on the part of the master plan, developed by the planning board, that this corresponds, this, this type of, um, medium-density residential category corresponds to the R four zone, not the R three zone. We know the R four zone permits dwellings on six thousand square foot lots. So, I think that, you know, the master plan is not recommending a zone change at this point, but it is an acknowledgement that this Rainbow Lakes neighborhood has densities of six to ten dwelling units per acre, not three dwelling units per acre, as the zoning suggests. Very important point, because, you know, we discussed that the number of variances seems excessive. And yes, it's excessive because the minimum lot area requirement is fifteen thousand square feet. It's not complementary to the type of development that's occurring here, or has occurred here over the past eight years. Um, in terms of the zoning relief, I think we went, I don't want to repeat what was already said, uh, the engineer did a very good job of describing all the variances. We'll add to that the driveway variance. Um, and now let's talk about the basis for the C variance relief. And I believe the relief is justifiable under both the C one and the C two criteria. Um, and the applicant doesn't have to prove all, they only have to prove one. In terms of the justification under the C one hardship test, I think this is a textbook hardship case. It relates to the land and not the building per se. Uh, the building is not oversized, and it would otherwise comply with a standard R three lot. Uh, for legal reference, the Lang case found that hardship was justifiable for an ordinary-sized pool. So, this house, I believe, is of reasonable proportions, it's not excessive. I know there was a, a question about, "Well, what about the other homes? Isn't it out of character possibly with the other homes in the area?" I'll remind the board, number one, a lot of those homes, uh, don't have attached garages. They have detached garages or no garage at all. Some of those homes are cabins, some are what I would call cottages or bungalows. And you gotta remember, they were developed during a, a period of time, which is, uh, many, many years ago, okay? Maybe back as in the forties and the fifties. People lived a different lifestyle then. Back in the nineteen forties and fifties, it wasn't unusual for three brothers to share one bedroom, or it wasn't unusual for the entire family to share one bathroom. Okay? We don't live like that today anymore. The average, I believe I read recently that the average-sized home in the United States now exceeds twenty-six hundred square feet in floor area. Um, it's just a, a culture change. We live differently today, that's all. But, again, I don't find this house to be excessive. I think it's reasonably proportioned. And again, consider the, the, uh, garage is attached to the structure. Uh, in terms of the justification of the C two balancing test, the benefits of the application as a whole outweigh the detriment. So when, you know, we're asking the board to consider the benefits of the application, you shouldn't focus merely on the benefits that arise from the deviation. You're allowed to take into account the context of the total proposed development, and that the benefits that are derived from the entirety of development. This project will replace an eighty-year-old vacant building with brand-new housing stock. And that's the goal of virtually every suburban community, is to upgrade existing housing or replace old dilapidated housing. I'm reading now again from the two thousand and twenty master plan, and it notes that more than two-thirds of residential structures have been built between nineteen fifty and nineteen eighty, and most of that amount coming in the nineteen sixties. Very few structures built before nineteen forty remain. And it goes on to say, "The age of the housing stock means that many homes are ripe for redevelopment, either through upgrades or replacement, i.e. teardowns." And that's exactly what's happening here. Replacing an old obsolete building that's been, that's fallen into disrepair and replace it with a new building with modern architectural treatments. Uh, new driveway with durable paving material, uh, new landscaping, all of which, I believe, are going to have an immediate impact on improving the visual quality of this site and better integrating it with its surroundings. This new home will add value, quality, and a positive aesthetic to the area. Um, it also, it removes an encroaching garage that crowds the street. That's the first thing I noticed about that existing dwelling. It screamed out at me. Now, at least we have a front yard setback where none currently exists. Uh, the project will enhance the neighbor's privacy with new evergreen trees. There's no evergreen trees there now. And the subdivision will create a more balanced, more uniform plating of the two lots. So, I believe that, uh, for all these reasons, uh, this project advances or promotes several different purposes of the municipal land use law, particularly purposes A, C, G, I, and M. And just very briefly to describe them, purpose A is to guide the appropriate use or development of land in a manner which promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. Purpose C is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Purpose G is to provide sufficient space at appropriate locations, uh, to accommodate a variety of land uses in order to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. Uh, purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative design or development techniques and good civic designs and arrangements. And purpose M to encourage land development with the view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. So all of those purposes are advanced for the reasons I just stated. Uh, the project will cause minimal impacts, if any, uh, and I'm talking about specifically environmental impacts, aesthetic impacts, uh, functional impacts. I just don't see that. And I'll remind the board, the test, when we're looking at impacts, is not whether, um, there is an impact. I, I think that there's, there's an inference or an implication that if you have a variance, it's going to bring with it, uh, some accompanying impact. So that can't be the test. The test is, the impact must be substantial. And I just don't see a substantial impact here. Uh, I believe all relief can be granted, well, without substantial detriment, uh, to the public, uh, and to the zone plan. So I'll just conclude by saying that this is a positive investment in the Rainbow Lakes, uh, lakefront area, and I believe the statutory criteria for the grant, uh, of all the relief are met. And I think the board should feel very comfortable in granting these variances, which will result in the elimination of an old obsolete building replaced with a new building, which is harmonious with the area, uh, and it is an upgrade, as, as far as I'm concerned. I think we should view it as such.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. Vate, anything?
Uh, no questions. I, I just wanted to make a point for the board, because I don't feel like it's come up tonight, um, in the sense that the existing home is deficient, um, so it, it, that is an existing non-conformity. It's only nine hundred and seventy-five square feet, doesn't meet the minimum, uh, size for a home. So I, I'm not clear on whether you're increasing or decreasing the number of variances, because I don't know if the existing driveway meets that five-foot setback either. So you might be, you know, having eleven variances now and creating, and, and having eleven variances when this is proposed, or maybe you have twelve variances and you're going to eleven. So, just for the board's knowledge, it's, it's a lot of variances that exist.
I'm glad you pointed that out, because I, I failed to mention that the, you know, the lot width variance has been, uh, improved. It's improvement over the existing lot width of fifty point one eight feet. Uh, the front yard setback, that's an improvement over the existing, uh, snout house at zero feet. And it removes three encroaching structures. The shed is actually on the wrong property altogether, that's one encroaching structure. The dwelling is a second, and the detached garage is a third. So, really, you're eliminating or improving, uh, three encroaching structures. Um, so yes, there, there are many improvements, uh, that have occurred.
That's it. Alright.
No comments.
Okay. Any members of the board have a question for our planner?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Dinsmore.
I'd just like to ask your, your overall opinion as a planner for something like this. It, in, in terms of good planning and better planning, we have an area that is filled with undersized lots. These are two undersized lots. One is actually for public use, well, semi-public use. Uh, the other is a private home. Is it your opinion as a planner that overall this is a better use of this land, this way, putting the house on a slightly bigger piece of land, taking out the encroaching garage and the like?
I think it makes perfect planning sense. As planners, the first thing we want to do is make sure that we use land for its intended purpose. Uh, and I think that certainly accomplishes that objective.
And the, and the, the next item within, within planning, one of the things we try to do as a planning board and as a land use board is to try to make it so that the streetscapes are, in our minds, what we believe the residential zone would be like. And do you think that this would improve that, uh, despite the fact that it's a somewhat larger home, uh, as, from a planning point of view now?
Uh, yes, it is a larger home. It's not, again, it's not excessive. It's not, again, it's not excessively large. And to me, the most remarkable feature of the existing dwelling, again, is that protruding garage coming right out to the right-of-way. I think the elimination of that garage and establishing an 18-foot front yard setback is a vast improvement over what exists today.
One of the things over many years that we've had discussions with in areas like this that have very small, irregular lots, is that streetscape and how do we do a better job of setting up our master plan to take into account that oddness. We don't want to create canyons, so we don't want to put in houses that are too big, that seem outsized for the area that they are in. We have discussed, but never had it really reach a point where it became law, that when you have an undersized lot where a house is within about 15 feet of the lot line, that instead of the 35-foot height requirement, that we might lower it. But at no point in time have I heard any discussions of a height requirement of less than 28 feet. And this is indicated at 27 feet. So what are your thoughts on small, irregular lots like this? And how we as a board and how this fits into what the board should be doing for its master plan approach, that kind of question?
Well, I think the master plan has already hinted that the zoning may be inappropriate here by putting it in that land use category that corresponds to the R4 zone. And we know the R4 zone allows 6,000-square-foot lots, a side yard setback of six feet, a combined side yard of 12 feet. So I think you're already taking a step in the right direction by examining what's happening in this Rainbow Lakes area. And maybe the next step is to examine the zoning to see if it remains appropriate. And that should correct a lot of problems.
It's tough. I mean, you're dealing with lots here in this area because I used to have a relative that lived in the relative area. A lot of 3,000 and 4,000-square-foot lots. So, you know, dividing, what is this total, like 9,000 square feet? Into, or 8,000 square feet? So that's almost, you know, a little bit closer to 50/50. So you've got, you still have two very undersized lots. And if you combine them all together, they barely make the R4 requirement, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's many, many planning tools that towns use. I mean, this area doesn't have an FAR requirement, but maybe that's something to investigate. I don't know. Like I said, there's many planning tools available to you to make sure that the land is developed appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the planner?
Just my own question then. In terms of the lot coverage, how does this home compare to the others in the neighborhood?
Well, I didn't, I didn't conduct a survey or analysis. But, I mean, looking, just looking at page two of my exhibit, and you look at some of the undersized lots, particularly near the top of the page, you can see, I don't know if you really can see the coverage. I guess you would have to drive past or even get in the backyard to look for the coverage. But I would say it's comparable to what's happening in this neighborhood already, only because the lots are 50 feet in width or even less in certain areas. So I would fully expect that if you analyzed these other 50-foot-wide lots, you'd probably come up with the same variances that we're looking at tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is a difficult area to account for. And one of the areas in the master plan which you didn't quote from was the preservation of our residential neighborhoods and the character of those neighborhoods. As you mentioned, a lot of cottages, cabins, different style of living. But the applicant chose to move into this neighborhood. We have other neighborhoods which have different characters and which might fit this home a little bit better. I'm not saying that this home doesn't conform. I'm thinking it through in my head. But changing the character of the neighborhood with one home promotes the next home, promotes the next home. And while it's certainly good, I agree, to turn these homes over, to do so in a manner which is aligned with the current character of the neighborhood is something that's necessary.
No, I agree with that. And, you know, I had a discussion with the engineer earlier. The footprint of the building, I think, is something like 1,500 square feet. That's not a lot. And even the floor area to me is not really that big. We have to understand that builders are not, we're not building 1,200-square-foot homes anymore. It's just not happening. And we have to recognize the dynamics of land use planning. Yes, there is going to be that turnover. And the turnover is going to be for larger homes. As a board, or I should say as planners, we just have to make sure that we just don't get excessive with these larger homes to the point where one home starts dwarfing the other homes next to it. And maybe, you know, lessening the value of their land because they're so much smaller. I don't see that here. Like I said, I think this home is of reasonable proportions. 1,500-square-foot footprint, in my mind, is not a big footprint for a home. And combine that with the fact that it's 27 feet tall, not excessive.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
All right, Mr. Attorney, back to you.
I have no other questions for Mr. Karl Haple. Can I take a minute and speak to Mr. Lewandi?
Oh, please, go ahead.
May? I usually do them every two weeks. Oh, wow. I'm more, I'm more basic. Usually the pink and white or pink or purple. I'm boring. I don't do anything too brighter. But I like to glitter. I always do something with glitter on one of my fingers. I like sparkles in my life. Oh, yeah. You've got to notice, I'm very boring.
I actually like to call Mr. Lewandi.
Okay, as a fact witness, I assume?
Yes, he's an attorney, but, you know.
Fair enough.
He's not here that way.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give tonight is truthful?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just state your name and fill out it for the record, please.
My last name is Lewandi, L-E-W-E-N-D-I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ahmad, you're the owner of this property, is that correct?
I am, yes.
About when did you purchase it?
About July 1st, dear.
And what's your intent for this home?
It's to live with my family.
And how large is your family?
I have one child and we're ex-spending one more.
And so you, I indicated to the board that you're an attorney, is that correct?
That's correct.
And where is your office?
In Denville, just a few steps away from that property action.
It's Denville Nailing Address, but it's actually in Porcifany.
Correct, yes.
Right? So now you're moving to this area. You've relocated your practice from another town to Porcifany?
From central New Jersey, yes, I agree.
And you're relocating your family here?
Yes.
And you've already closed on this lot?
Correct.
And you've heard some comments from the board in terms of size of the home. Venture a guess if they're kind of okay with the subdivision line being where it might be. Let's assume that for a second. But, you know, we're hearing from some members of the board that maybe the house is larger than what they might like to see in the neighborhood. And I'm not saying they're all saying that, because I don't think so, but some are. Are you willing to work and plan with the planning board here?
100%.
And is one thing you can do to lower the height or the perceived height of the structure?
Absolutely, yes.
And you think we can do that and still maintain a two-story structure, is that right?
Correct. And just to note that almost every other house on the street is two-story structure.
And the overall, we've heard that architects indicate that there's about 2,000 square feet of living space within the home. Do you think, and you're very familiar with the neighborhood, you own the property, right? Do you, and just answer without nodding your head. So you're familiar with that neighborhood?
I am.
And do you perceive the house as being overly large for the neighborhood?
Not at all. As it exists right now, we have only 542 square feet of living space. That's a very, very tiny area.
On the first floor?
On the first, right now it's only one floor. So we have 542 at this point. So even if you double that, we're still going to be less than 1,500 square feet. And I believe that's smaller than most of the houses on that street. So I'm not sure about the accuracy of the 2,000. I believe it's going to be much less than that. Because we're not expanding beyond the existing footprint, and that's my understanding, foundation-wise. So the 542, even if you double that, it's still going to be low 1,500. That's my understanding.
When you say that, you're bringing it out to the shed?
I'm only talking about the living space.
When you say we're not expanding beyond the existing foundation, we're kind of, we're staying within, if you want to call it the disturbed area or the foundation for the shed and the foundation for the home.
Correct.
Combined.
Correct.
So, and those structures are going away.
Correct.
So although the today version of this lot takes up that amount of space, is what you're saying?
Correct. We're trying to fix all the problems that we found when we purchased that house. And it looked like the shed and the garage existing, nonconforming, and it's been like that for many, many, many years. So even if we wanted to renovate the existing structure, I was advised by the experts that they're not sure that the structure is reasonably safe to renovate. So the advice was to knock it down and, you know.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lewandi from the members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Frasier.
Just curious, what is your relationship with GL Trinity Holdings?
Well, okay, initially when we bought this house, it was supposed to be an investment. It was supposed to be a flip. But I fell in love with the area and the neighborhood and a beautiful lake view in the back. And I decided to take it over, to reside with it, to reside in it with my family.
So your LLC, which I assume that's your LLC?
Correct. I own this LLC to buy and flip homes. And that's the only thing that got me out of law school is student debt. I graduated with $200,000 in student debt. And that's the only thing that helped me to get out of that debt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But to clarify, that's off the table and you're intending to live here?
No, this is going to be my property residence.
Any other questions?
That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frasier. All right, it seems the board has had their questions answered. Anything else?
Well, I'd just like to point out a few things, what we heard tonight and what we're still open to discussion about. The lot is extremely small. It is undersized, as pointed out by your own planner. There's probably more issues that are at variance with your zoning as in the existing condition than in the proposed condition. You know, the lot, the existing home was built in about 1940, pre-takes zoning. That's why the garage is partially in the street. Shed's on the wrong lot. You know, we're correcting all of those situations, which are great improvements for the area and for the township, certainly consistent with your master plan and zoning ordinances. You know, the size of a lot will create so many hardships for the need for the variances. At 27 feet in height, we're well below what the ordinance would permit you go to. Mr. Lewandi's indicated, and I can bring the architect back up if you want to hear from him, but he's indicated you can get that down somewhat. You know, it's the architectural design that makes that peak kind of just slant a bit. So he thinks he can get it down to 25 feet, if that were a condition to stay at 25 feet. We don't think it's really out of character with the neighborhood. Many of the homes that are there, you know, don't have garages or do have hatch garages. So when you're comparing square footages, you know, that's certainly in play. You know, many of them are really, were built as summer cabins, probably back in the 40s and 50s, and are still that way. You know, this is an opportunity to improve the area of roughly 2,000-square-foot homes, not excessive for really most people. And, you know, I think that size house, if this were conforming, we would certainly be able to comply. And I think in this case, you look at the lot next to us where we're kind of buying some property from them. It's the association's lot that's really not intended to be built upon. We did attempt to purchase additional property to be able to satisfy some of the setbacks and some of the percentages. The association was pretty adamant, that was the line, and they weren't going to let us get out any further, unfortunately. But when you look at that as a package, you know, those lots combined, you satisfy almost all of those requirements in your zone. And it's just not a lot that's going to be built on. It's owned by the homeowners association. We're launching votes. It's wooded, heavily wooded to that one side where this house will be. So it provides tremendous buffer to that side. You know, we have C2 criteria, as you've heard from Mr. Palback, and the purposes of zoning that we satisfy. We are, again, improving situations by removing the garage. There's more balance and size between those lots. We've become somewhat more consistent with the other lots on the street and in the neighborhood to make this lot a little bit larger. I think this is just a better planning alternative to what we're proposing versus what's there. So I would urge you to vote favor of the application. And as Mr. Lewandi indicated, you're willing to listen and work with the board through the planning board. Let's plan, if that's what you're saying. But we're certainly available to hear if there's something that's really bothering you that we're not going to get sufficient votes. We're here to listen to that.
Understood. Okay. Well, at this point, I'll go ahead and open up the public portion just in case there's any comments that, or questions that you would like to ask. And seeing as we have nobody here but the people who are part of your testimony, I'll assume that we have no questions. And I actually think that's an important factor. This was a, this was an application that required notice, and nobody came to object. So that's something I think we should all consider as well. With that said, I'll go ahead and allow members of the board.
Somebody come in first?
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Lewandi testifying just now.
I appreciate Mr. Luwandi testifying just now. I'm just, I was just going through Zillow, and I don't think your home will be that far out of character. There are some homes that, I know Zillow isn't the end-all, but there are some quite expensive homes on this portion of the lake, so I don't think he's gonna be doing anything out of the ordinary. And like I said, I do appreciate him coming forward and testifying as well. But there are some here, you know, 700,000, $800,000 homes, so I think he's fitting right in in the neighborhood, redoing an old house, getting rid of one, and put up a really nice one, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Napolitano. I'll, I'll allow any other comments to be made after a motion is, is granted or is put forth. So if there is a motion.
Motion to accept application number 21:506, Aman Luwandi, 56 Upper Rainbow Trail Block 117, lots 27, 28, minor subdivision with C variance.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Any amendments to that, or is that, you know, based on, because the application has 27 feet on the height and?
I, no, I know, no amendments to that.
So you're accepting the 27 feet? I'll second. Dinsmore.
All right, seconded, Dinsmore. At this time, we have a, we have a motion to accept the application as, as written. Do any members of the board want to offer any comments?
Yes, I will just make the observation. This, this will be an improvement, better on the eyes than what we're looking at now. So I welcome it.
Thank you. All right. Other members of the board?
Yes.
Mr. Tadich?
Yep, so I don't raise a comment or a question or concern, but I'll just raise it and we'll see what happens. So on the current lot, there are smaller structures, right, built, I don't know, 50, 60, 70 years ago. Now we are going to put up a bigger structure in size in more like a smaller area. Is there any security or, not security, safety concern, right? Are you putting, the lot is on the bank of the lake. Again, I'm not a civil engineer expert in that, that domain, but is there a, are you putting a bigger construction structure on the bank of the lake? Is there any safety concern, anything? What should we be thinking of then?
Can I ask our engineer to answer that question? Is your question, is it unsafe to build a home and somehow be impeding upon?
Again, I'm just going from the purely common sense thing in my mind, right? That is distributed construction in a bigger area versus more condensed structure, right? So again, very old structure, old foundation, any safety concern?
The construction department would review if they're building on the foundation. They would require an engineer to submit to the building department, and we would review that at the time of application.
Okay.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't allow anybody to build a house on a foundation that's not safe, if that's your concern. That, that's what my department's doing.
Perfect, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, I'm, I'm. If you're on the question.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. I, I just like, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dinsmore?
Well, I was just gonna say that, that, you know, I spent a long time on the Board of Adjustment, and we spent a lot of time on applications exactly like this. This is our bread and butter when we were in the Board of Adjustment, when I was there. You have an area like Rainbow Lakes, which is an eclectic, let's call it an eclectic area. It is not Mount Taber, where you have all these wonderful gingerbread historical homes. So what you want is a gentle turnover of housing stock to gain new homes so that it keeps the area attractive. And you don't want eclectic old homes to end up stockpiling where, as, as in this case, it appears that the house was somewhat neglected for a long time. And I, in walking through some of our neighborhoods that are small lots, I see this, I mean, I just walked through a part of Lake Hiawatha that I had always thought was a very nice area, and it was like, you know, there are a lot of houses here that need some work. And so I, I wanna welcome, you know, you're thoughtful, you're, you're willing to work with us on this. And I think that that would be a, a great addition to the neighborhood, and I like your approach. I mean, it's a very difficult case with this, with such small irregular lots. I'm trying to remember, there's another one in Rainbow Lakes, it was like, the lot itself was only 1,800 square feet. We had to build, we had to figure out how to put something there. So that's over by Fox Lane. And so I think it's a good application, as you can see, I seconded it. I, I believe you're gonna do a great job and be a good neighbor, so.
Thank you.
I would vote in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Dinsmore. I, I also am in favor of this application. You know, what I see here is a, a project that, you know, maybe more modern than a lot of the homes here, but certainly is in the taste of a lot of the buildings here. I think your architect actually did a very good job here. Making the roof slant towards the back makes the front of the home not overpowering, as we've seen in many of the homes in other areas that give us concern. And instead projects that towards the back where there's, there's no issue. It keeps, it keeps the front scape of the house, you know, in taste with the community. And certainly, as you said, and as we've noticed ourselves, there are a lot of other two-story homes, you're not out of character there. And, and the fact that Rainbow Lakes, which is a very active community, chose not to come out to oppose your application also speaks to me. And so I, I assume that they support this, as they've also been willing to give you some of their land. So all of this ties together to me as, as an application, which makes sense. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Frigieri.
Yes, hi. I, I am not in favor of this proposal, I'm in favor of the intent of the proposal to, to renovate and to make creative use of the space, and I applaud the efforts in that direction. But we have no amendments to this, and I just honestly don't see how it meets the criteria for C variance relief. You all did a good job making your case, but I, I, I'm not seeing it. And I do think that it's a beautiful home, all, all credit to the architect. I just don't think this particular home belongs in this particular neighborhood. And I, I, I think it's just too tight, and, and the, the idea that, you know, this, this number of variances, I understand there's pre-existing issues. But it, it, it seems that depending on what the point was, it was either the, the fault of the, the small lot, or it was the benefit of the big house. But, but somehow it was never that this house didn't belong in this lot. So for that reason, unless there's some way to make amendments, I'm not going to support this, this proposal tonight.
Understood, Mr. Frigieri. So what we'll do is we'll allow further comments on, on this motion, and then we'll take a vote on this motion as it stands. And if it passes, we're done for tonight. If it doesn't pass, then we'll go ahead and entertain other motions. All right? Any other questions or comments for the record tonight? All right? Well, with that said, we have a motion to accept this application as it's been presented by Mr. Napolitano and seconded by Mr. Dinsmore. Nora, would you please take the roll?
Tadich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Frigieri?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mandell?
No.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Bonakin?
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Your application has been approved. Congratulations. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too, thank you. Good luck.
Before we go on, can I just say one thing to the board members? I want you to be aware that when, when an applicant comes before the board for an application like this, and this is approved for the variances that it has, once it comes to me, I cannot make him build that house. I can only have him build in the variances that you have. So if an applicant comes back and says, you know what, changed my mind, and, and builds a different house, that very well can happen. So I want you to understand that in two years from now, if he chooses to submit to the building department and there's a difficulty, me as the zoning officer can only enforce the variances that you granted. That building envelope. Everything in that building envelope and new single-family dwellings is my number-one permit. I issue them every week, every month, that's like my specialty, is new development. And, and I just want you to understand that, is when you have applications before this, he could change his mind and build to a 35-foot-high house. Because if we don't specify the height, and all the houses that are being built today are twice the size of what he's proposed. They're at 30, 32, they're finishing the basement, they're finishing the attic, they're giant homes.
So point of, point of order, Ms. Veely, is we've actually had an opinion from our board attorney that said that we are able to enforce the site plans that are presented here. So I, I don't know how that conflicts with, with what your experience is, but we have had that presented to us by our board attorney.
Okay. Unless you, in that resolution, stated that only that house can be built, I cannot enforce just that house. Because remember, Nora signs off on the plans, so she signs off on the site plan. So the site plan is the variance and the setbacks, it's not the architectural. So unless the attorney puts in the resolution, blue house, 32 feet high, setback at this, I do at the building envelope.
Okay.
You know? And, and my attorney is the township attorney, who has told me that my job is to enforce the site plan and the site plan alone. So the architecturals are, doesn't fall under me to enforce.
Okay.
So that's why, like, when I look over, and Susan and I go over, we try to, like, make those things, but I just want you to understand, I can't enforce that house to be built. If there's a way to do that, the township attorney has to state and put it in the resolution that only that particular house is built. Because a year from now, when he's built and he turns it or changes it, I, I can't stop him from doing that. And I can't stop that height. But remember that, that I know everybody has a problem with the height, but the Board of Adjustment, the council, and the planning board approve the height of 35 feet. And that's where people are, they're building big houses now. It's just what it is.
So I would say two things. That commentary would, probably would have been helpful during, before the vote.
Well, I've said this a couple times, and nobody ever pays attention.
The, the second item, though, is I, I would say that since we, we did make the, the vote on the basis of as presented.
The 27.
That I would ask our attorney to make sure that the height of the building, which was identified as 27 feet, be included in the resolution.
That was presented?
Yes.
Right. Now, can that be presented for that particular model home, or just the height? Is that the only thing that we can in the resolution enforce the height? We can't force that specific layout, that specific, because it came up in another house, and the township attorney told me, no, I couldn't make them build the, the specific plan.
As presented, should include the height, the footprint, the setbacks that were presented to us.
It will be building and purview coverage, because remember, we gave a variance for that. So he, they can't go any higher than that building and variance, they can't go, so say he decided to build a little smaller and move it a little? He could, because he would, he would be increasing a variance. Susan, I'm saying that correctly, right? He wouldn't be increasing a variance, he'd be lessening. So say he decides to build smaller. But I just want you to know that what's out there being built are giant homes, and you're seeing them in town. They're at, you know, approximately 30, 32 feet, two-story, attic, basement, the, you know, everything. That's why I asked about the basement.
And we've had discussions about this many times.
And many times I've brought this up, but, you know, that's why when the members ask about the height, that's not one of the variances.
Well, we've had, I've been a board member with many different attorneys, and some attorneys said that we could enforce the plan that they brought before us. And others have said, well, not so fast.
And my, and I've been told not so fast, you know, the.
Maybe we can ask our attorney to draw it up based on the application, saying, here, here are some of the, of the bulk items mentioned by the application, saying that they intended to not be any higher than this. And then let them know that if they have a problem with that, that we could turn down the resolution at our next meeting.
So just that you're aware that it's 27 feet, because your next step will be coming to me for a permit with plot plans and everything, and architecturals and everything.
All you have to do is ask, and it's my job to comply with the board and make you all happy.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Jen, I don't mean any disrespect.
Oh, no, not at all. I understand.
Okay, good night. All right. So this concludes our agenda for this evening. Are there any other topics that members of the board wish to bring forward at the meeting tonight? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved, Dinsmore.
All right, Dinsmore first, is that a second from Frigieri?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed?
None.
Okay.